All right. Thank you. Thank you so much and good morning. And it is always great to welcome people to my hometown of Atlanta, Georgia. I'm a true Georgia peach, so as much as you can, I'm sure the senators up here will agree, if you could spend as much money as possible before you leave, we would greatly appreciate it. So, thank you from the state of Georgia. I have the pleasure of introducing two of my colleagues that served in the Georgia Senate. And we had a chairman, the chairman in the House of Representatives who was not able to make it, but we are going to do just fine with these gentlemen who are well-versed in the subject area that we're talking about right now. So, I first want to introduce Senator Justin Hill, who was first elected to the Georgia Senate in 2004 and currently serves as Chairman of the Finance Committee. He is also a member of the Appropriations, Health and Human Services and Rules Committee. In 2006, 2008, and 2012, Senator Hill was unanimously elected to serve as Vice Chairman of the Senate Republican Caucus. In 2014, Senator Hill was named Legislature of the Year by James Magazine. He is a principled-driven legislator who believes Georgia has a strong and proud heritage of faith, family, and freedom. And beside him is Senator Emanuel Jones, who was first elected to the Georgia Senate from Georgia's 10th District in 2004. And Senator Jones represents southwest DeKalb and Henry County. He is the current Chairman of the Martin Luther King Advisory Council and formerly served as Chairman of the Georgia Legislative Black Caucus for two consecutive legislative sessions. Senator Jones is a member of the Banks and Financial Institutions, Economic Development and Tourism Interstate Cooperation Special Judiciary and Retirement Committees. Most recently, Senator Jones was honored as a recipient of the Global Peace Festival Award in Malaysia and named as one of Atlanta Tribune Magazine's Men of Distinction. So, if you could give them a round of applause and welcome them for taking their time out to speak to us today. So, before I get started with the questions, I just wanted to set the stage for what we're talking about, which is the future of investment policy in Georgia. And one of the reasons that this intrigues me so much is because I happen to be a private securities attorney. And one of the things I wanted to make sure I brought to the legislature when I got elected was to make sure that we had a different perspective on how to impact economic development in Georgia. And one of those ways is through developing our policies to make it easier not only to access capital, but to infuse capital into the state of Georgia. So, I want to start by giving you a little bit of background about some legislative proposals on the federal level, just to give you sort of what's going on on the federal level. There are a few things that are happening in the Georgia, excuse me, the U.S. House of Representatives concerning access to capital markets. One of them is a bill that would create a micro offering, which would carve out an exemption to Section 4 of the Securities Act. And so, for companies that raise under $500,000, it wouldn't be limited to accredited investors, but you couldn't have more than 35 purchasers. And that's being proposed by Representative Tom Emmer of Minnesota. Another bill is proposed by Representative Scott Garrett in New Jersey's 5th Congressional District. And this is to simplify the recording requirements to the SEC under Regulation D. Some of the things would include requiring the SEC to notify states of the information that is contained in Forms D automatically. Another thing would be eliminating the requirement of filing a Form D as a prerequisite of the availability of the 506 Safe Harbor. And then, another one would be prohibiting the SEC from requiring issuers conducting a 506C offering from filing its general solicitation materials. And so, most of that things would be done electronically. Two more things that is happening on the federal level is this thing called Fixed Crowdfunding Act, which would raise the cap from 1 million to 5 million, which the Invest Georgia exemption has already done happily, but it would raise that cap from 1 million to 5 million. And then, the other thing that Congress and the SEC seem to always do is try to redefine the definition of accredited investor. And so, there is a bill, H.R. 2187, in Congress that would actually expand the definition of an accredited investor to include those with experience and education in addition to those with the requisite net worth and salary. So, those are interesting on the federal level, and so you should keep abreast of those. Now, briefly, on the state level, we have the Association for Corporate Growth that has provided information that from 2003 to 2014, over $108.7 billion and over 1,800 deals have been done in the state of Georgia requiring private capital. The Invest Georgia exemption has seen 39 companies that have been able to raise money through the Invest Georgia exemption. And one of the things that the Georgia House of Representatives is doing is holding a series of ad hoc committee hearings, one that's going to be at the end of May, just to open it up to the investment community so that they can come and talk to us about what things they would like to see changed policy-wise as we go into the 2017 session. So, if anybody's interested in coming to that next hearing, then please just get a card from me. But without further ado, I want to get started with the senators and ask them the first question, which is, why did you decide to take part in this discussion aside from my charm?
Well, I guess we just kind of jump in, by the way. And first of all, let me just thank my good friend, Representative Darshan, for inviting me to be part of this event today. There's really two things aside from family I love talking about, as politics and the other one is money. And I am a business owner. I own several automobile dealerships in the Atlanta, Georgia area and Columbus area. And I think this opportunity is critical to me because every industry evolves. And when you look at an industry like the automobile industry that I've been a part of for the last 27, 28 years, there's a lot of evolution in that particular industry, which means it's going to create a lot of opportunities for all of us and hopefully it'll create a lot of opportunities for those of us that are already in the industry, particularly those of us that are franchise dealers. We talk about autonomous driving. That's really on the cutting edge of our industry, which is going to reshape it. We really don't know what kind of impact that's going to have. But certainly, those of us that's on the inside would like to be a part of it when it occurs because that wave is coming. When you talk about technology and the, really, the impact that technology's had, not just on all of the other industries across the spectrum, but particularly what the impact that technology's had on my industry and some of the things that I've been involved with incubating other companies, it's created really an opportunity for all of us, particularly those in the General Assembly, to look at what we have to do to provide, to make sure that the ground is fertile in Georgia so that these industries can continue to incubate and that these industries can continue to grow and flourish. And there's no better way to do that than ensuring access to capital. Thank you, Representative.
Thank you.
Thank you as well. Appreciate the opportunity to be with you today and thanks for taking the time to come here. This is probably the southern end of my Senate district, just a little bit, about a mile up the road. So, welcome, welcome here if you're not from Georgia, but I think you answered the reason, the question for the reason that I'm here. And actually, Darshan's very persuasive, but also was a big help and advocate for a piece of legislation I was trying to push through in the House of Representatives this year. Just a little bit of background, I drafted and authored the alternative investment legislation in Georgia, started around 2006. It took us about six years to get passed. Maybe talk about that in a few minutes. My background, a little bit of background, I'm an attorney, was a federal prosecutor, worked for President Reagan, the White House, was at the State Department, U.S. Attorney's Office. Then have a Series 7 license, not active at this point. But I got into the M&amp;A side of things, investment banking, done a lot of different work, worked with some small businesses that are growing and looking for capital and all that. So, I've been involved in the industry to a certain extent for quite a while and have a little bit of knowledge about it, but definitely not as much as y'all, but enough to be aware that we need to continue, actually, we needed to start and continue to create a more favorable environment in Georgia for startup companies, private equity, investment capital of all types, whether it's venture capital or angel investing as well. I also ran an entrepreneur residence study committee and reignited that this last year, creating a joint study committee between the House and the Senate that did pass. And that's where we actually started talking because it's interesting. Legislators have no clue what you're talking about when you mention entrepreneur residence programs. They really don't because they're, they come to the legislature with all sorts of backgrounds, and that's probably not one, the investment side. So, it's, I think it's critically important that y'all are interested not just only with what's going on the federal government side, but also at the state government side because we want to be the best place for y'all to flourish. And we know for quite some time we have not been, when we still have this, or not still, but we have this financial and investment community, and we also have the entrepreneur and the incubator community that's, that's good. But, you know, whether they're coming out of University of Georgia or any other schools in Vining, then we lose them, and I don't need to tell you the rest of the story why we do that. We're trying to stop that. We've created Invest Georgia a few years ago, finally starting to get that funded. And so, bottom line is, I think it's critically important to Georgia as we move forward. It's obviously important to the work that y'all do, but it's important to us as leaders as we try to just make Georgia the best place, the best environment to start a business, to fund a business, and to continue your business here in the state. And that's our objective. And so, once again, thank you all for the chance to be with you and learn from y'all.
Thank you so much, senators. So, both of you have been elected for longer than I have. And when I first came in, we sort of, I came in in 2011, and we sort of had the ball rolling on getting the Invest Georgia exemption and some other things going. But before that time, what are sort of the challenges either before that time or that you see in general with educating sort of our colleagues about the importance of private investment policy? And what are some challenges just in general with making sure that we have a strong investment policy in Georgia?
Well, I think some of the challenges have already been mentioned in our opening comments. And education is really, really important. And in our General Assembly, we have people with all sorts of backgrounds. There's some like my good friend and my colleague here to my left that kind of understand what we're talking about when we start talking about all of these investment vehicles from derivatives to, you name the type of investment vehicle, he gets it, he understands it. But a lot of our colleagues don't. That's certainly a challenge. The other challenge is kind of building, I would certainly have to say, trying to build in a coalition. And that's certainly one of the things that I'm proud of. My friend over here is on our side. I'm a Democrat as well. But there's things that we have in common that we think is good for the state. And I would certainly have to say that our current governor has set the environment for Georgia at the top, certainly at one of the top states in the country in terms of investment and trying to attract new businesses to this particular state. And it's incumbent on all of us in the General Assembly because that's the job creator. And that's what we do and certainly is incumbent on all of us, particularly those of us on each side of the aisle, to find those things that we have in common so that we can perfect legislation that's going to encourage and promote a business and climate in Georgia. Georgia's been very blessed, I think, in so many ways. You mentioned before you came into legislature, of course, when we came in at the same time, you may remember, our budget was down around $17, $18 billion. And every state, of course, in the union was struggling with trying to get over this economic downturn. Georgia, like a lot of other states, have fully recovered. I think this year, our budget is close to about $24 billion with an equal amount mentioned from the federal government. So, as things has improved, we have to certainly decide what's the best way to invest those dollars that the public has trusted us with. And one initiative that I know is going to have big dividends in Georgia is the initiative that both sides of the aisle is championing this state, and that is a deepening of the port in Savannah, moving goods and services around. I had an opportunity to go to China about a year ago. And one of the things that I learned is that Georgia, in terms of the other states, is, I think, number three on the list in terms of exports to China. And it's because of a port, because of the port that we have in Savannah. And when you start looking at Georgia's infrastructure, it's key to making sure that we invest in the infrastructure. And that's why I'm glad about a year ago, we did exactly that by being able to push this transportation bill, which raised on average about a billion dollars annually. There's a lot of good things happening in this state. There's a lot of, despite some of the things you may hear out there on the national media, there are a lot of areas that we share, that we both support, and there's a lot of good things that's happening in promoting business and promoting, more importantly, the business climate in this great state.
And I do call Emanuel a good friend, and I agree with what he said. This issue is not a partisan issue in this state, and it shouldn't be anywhere, frankly. And some of our closest allies in the Republican side have been Democrat leaders in the House and the Senate. Kasim Reed was in the House, the Senate, excuse me, is in the House as well, but in the Senate, I think he served maybe six years in the Senate with us and became a good friend. And he was one of the lead advocates in the House as well as in the Senate. It was the other way around, the Senate as well as in the House, actually, because he would champion the alternative investment legislation. You asked a question, what are the big hindrances? What are the hurdles that we've had to jump over? And Emanuel talked about it's education. There's a couple of things. You get elected to the legislature, let's say one of y'all gets elected, tell me your background in education, healthcare, transportation, the deep dive background, probably not a whole lot. So, when you're talking about this industry, it's the same and probably even more challenging. Couple of things have happened. We've built a better relationship with the investment community in our state. Y'all have been busy, you know, running your businesses, investing in businesses, raising families, et cetera. Y'all haven't been very, and this is not just picking on one industry, but y'all haven't been very involved in building those long-term relationships with the legislature. And other industries do the same thing. They come to us when they need something. But we're in the education mode right now. That's one of the reasons we're sitting here today. We're at a session. We're learning. It's important to help us learn. We need the help to learn. It's, I think that's critically important. Number two is, we've had, people are afraid of alternative investments. And we had a representative, actually my House sponsor, the first year I passed the alternative investment bill, which is actually not where we need to be. It's too watered down, but that's another story for another day. We were just trying to leg in, let people realize that the state wasn't going to fall off in the Atlantic Ocean when you passed the bill. And you may laugh, but that was almost where we were. But the representative who stood up in the well of the House, my sponsor in the House of Representatives that year, a CPA, I'm not going to tell you his name, it's been a long time ago. But he stands there and he gets a question from a House member while he's standing and presenting the bill. And they said, Representative, what are alternative investments? And I was over there in the chambers, and he paused for what seemed to be three hours. It was probably about a minute and a half. And he's shuffling around his papers. This is my sponsor, a CPA, and goes, oh, those are those real risky investments. Well, you know what happened to the bill? No one wanted, I mean, we're trying to sell the bill, not say, we want everyone to invest in risky. Bottom line is, you expect a CPA to have that background, too. That's why he became the sponsor that year. And it's the education of the legislature that I think are your biggest hurdles. We're doing a lot better job. The other is certain industries. That alternative investment legislation does not apply and did not apply and was specifically written a legislation never to apply to the teacher retirement systems in Georgia, precluded them from investing in these. But every year in the House, they, the teachers, some, one of the teachers' unions locked down against it and said it was going to hurt the teachers. Was totally unrelated to them, but we have, we have hurdles. We've gotten over some of them. We need to get further along because that's just one example. It was also illegal to invest in certain international investments, too, by our retirement systems. And we have about four or five of those retirement systems are in these different silos, but I'll pause at that.
Thank you so much. Now, turning to the Invest Georgia exemption, and we have representatives from the Secretary of State, so tell me if I say anything, just make eye contact with me. But we have currently about 32 other states that have some form of interest rate crowdfunding. Ours is called the Invest Georgia exemption. And Georgia has one of the strongest ones. And I know because I had House research, do a comparison of all the states in Georgia, it's definitely one of the ones that has the highest cap, the highest, one of the higher investment amounts that you can invest in the simplest process because it's literally only a two-page form that you fill out with the Secretary of State. But I did note that South Carolina, which notoriously gets mentioned as a direct competitor with Georgia businesses, they actually have something where they don't have a cap, a raised cap, and they don't have any cap for investors. Am I correct with that?
No, they do have a cap.
What is the?
They have a $1 million cap, $5,000 per unaccredited investor cap.
Okay, but they don't have a cap on the accredited investor, correct?
No cap, no cap.
Okay. So, they don't have a cap on the definition of an accredited investor. And Georgia currently does have the cap, which is the $10,000 for non-accredited investors.
There's not a cap for accredited investors.
So, given that South Carolina, I mean, we obviously have a $5 million cap more, but do you think there's anything else that Georgia can do to loosen up funding or the cap or investments in the interest rate crowdfunding exemption that we have on the Invest Georgia?
I think one of the things we might look at, this is, if I'm right, the first year we've actually funded Invest Georgia. We've tried to for a while. The Senate's always pushed it, and we've had different battles. And we don't need to get into details, but we, it did not get, not get funded. And basically, the concept is create a startup fund generator to, if this is giving you any back, feedback, let me know. Sounds like it is over here. But to create some seed capital, and then the hope is that it continues to regenerate itself. So, the seed capital's placed, is given, the investor has the opportunity to participate in Invest Georgia, and it's really through established venture capital firms is where the, where the money is intended to flow out of. Still feels like there's some feedback here, but the, so the money starts to flow out of the seed capital out of Invest Georgia, and then 100% of the principal will be returned to the Invest Georgia, 80% of the profits and 20% of the investment profits would stay at the venture capital firm under some formula, if I've got that right. Whether, as it relates to crowdfunding, I'd like to hear y'all's advice, frankly, on that. It seems that I support the, go to the federal standard on accredited investors at the state level, which sounds like, which is where we are in Georgia and where South Carolina is. I understand the cap on non-accredited investors. Maybe that, I don't know if that would actually move the dial too much for the industry to raise it from 10,000 to 20,000 or some higher number. You picked the number. I don't know if that would actually make a difference coupled with balancing the risk that's addressed in accredited investor determinations. The Invest Georgia has a cap, cap of $100 million. We've only got the $10 million into it. And then you get into discussion, what's the proper role of government? Some would say those concepts are not even, should not even be advanced by government. Why should you have government investing in these, helping invest in these small businesses? So, really, that's more of a open it up for, that's a long way to say. I'd like to hear what y'all believe may be some barriers or hurdles or things that are discouraging y'all from participating in it if you actually know much about it at this point. Other states have done it. A lot of other states have a similar fund. Would you go there, you know, as a first, second, third place for early-stage or growth-stage capital? And if not, why not? And then tell us, and we can work through whether it's the regulatory side or the legislative side, what would make sense to create a better environment?
I have a question. Is this a question about some of the things that are going on? I don't want to bore everyone today, but.
Yeah, and hopefully we'll have some time afterwards.
Maybe give us a card when we finish here and we'll follow.
Or follow him on Twitter.
And Del Ray, thanks.
All right, great. So, the next question that I have, so I get all these different reports on private equity and what industries they've invested in. And I guess that part makes me somewhat of a nerd, but I took a look at this company called PitchBook. I found them on Twitter, surprisingly. And they, and they send me all this data on private equity. And the last one showed that last quarter, the top three industries that received the most private funding were healthcare, technology, and the energy sector. Now, I know Georgia has focused a lot recently on the entertainment industry. So, I guess my question is, one, are we sort of focusing on maybe not the wrong industry, but what other things can we do to focus maybe on the industries that seem, based on data, to attract the most private equity dollars?
Which I think is a really good question, by the way, because healthcare is a really, really large industry in the state of Georgia. I just happen to be on the technology end, by the way. And when we talk about technology, there's a lot of different components to technology, by the way. And I give you a good example of what I'm talking about. We created a computer company, kind of a startup company, that kind of modeled some of the interaction between some of the transactions that I have in my business. And that's a little technology company, went out and created apps and invested software and trying to emulate that particular interaction, by the way. And there's a lot of companies like that in Georgia. You know that we have in some of our major institutions, educational institutions, that we have a lot of technology startup. I believe Georgia Tech is the hub for that, by the way, and certainly down in South Georgia. I know Columbus State University is participating as well. So, we're trying to incubate a lot of these businesses, particularly in the technology sector, but it just takes so long to do that. There are a lot of good ideas out there, but it takes so long to incubate those ideas. So, if there's one area that I would say that we need to do a better job of, particularly from the legislative branch, is trying to identify early on what some of these potential opportunities are, and then trying to assist them with where to go to fund those opportunities that they have. This particular idea that I had in the technology sector, I was fortunate to work with Columbus State University and their Entrepreneur Department on trying to put together some initial assessments of what kind of impact this particular technology would have on certainly the automobile industry. And that's one area that I think we need to do more of trying to, there's certainly, Georgia's not lacking in terms of intellect in these particular sectors, by the way, particularly when you look at energy and technology as well as healthcare. But being able to identify what some of those innovations are and being able to direct those innovators, if you will, to those investors out there that may take an interest in that particular sector. And I'm sure my colleague on the other side would kind of join with me in recognizing the impact that these startups can have on our state's economy.
Just an added thought, too, is I don't think we, as a state, are patient investors. We're looking for a quick return on our investment as opposed to a longer term. And so, when you're looking at healthcare and healthcare technology, looking at straight technology of all different sorts, you're looking at the energy sector, which are all critical. And frankly, we want to be the best place to create innovative ideas and host and those companies here in the state for the long term, make them permanent residents. But what we've done in the motion picture side seems to me is we get a short, you know, a quick return on investment. A company comes in, they're in a one, two-year production cycle, they get a really significant benefit by being here, whether it's producing films or doing TV commercials or TV shows or whatever. Georgia's the number three state in the nation for all this, behind New York and California. And, but we, as the state and taxpayers, see a quicker return. The local communities see a quicker return on investment because you're having a myriad of people coming in to produce a movie, for example. I was in one two years ago, kind of by a fluke, but I got to see the set, is my point, the movie sets for a couple of days. And you get so many people. So, we're looking for a quicker return, and I think that's what happens. I don't, no one's ever said this. I've never heard anybody say this, but I'm just thinking, when you ask the question, why, I think we should be patient investors as well and not be an either-or perhaps, but to be an and, and to be more patient in our investment horizons. Look at the entrepreneur investment programs, look at what we can do to frankly accelerate the alternative investment opportunities as well as other, basically frankly, get out of the way, get out of your way and help y'all succeed and make Georgia the best state in the country where. y'all succeed and make Georgia the best state in the country where frankly, we get out of the way. And then also be advocates at the federal level for what you need because we have relationships and strong with those senators and representatives at the federal level. I know the Department of Labor has really gone after the financial advisor community based on some new regulations they're proposing. I'm not sure how much that applies to each of y'all here, but we need to frankly, in my view, stop that completely and get out of the way and we can be advocates at the federal level too if we have the information from y'all to know what to advocate for.
And that's what leads me into my last question before we open up to Q and A, any more questions that you have. And that is, do you have anything in the works, any events or plans for the 2017 session? I know we just ended March 24th, so we're still in our recovery period, so I wouldn't be surprised if they're just on, you know, planning a vacation or something like that. But if you have any plans or initiatives, what are those? And then the second thing is, how can people who support your initiatives, how can they support you under the gold dome? Because that's always, you know, that's always an issue. If you like something, you need to tell because, you know, we do something you don't like and we hear 10 times as many people. So if you support something, they're going to tell you how you can support their initiatives.
For those of us that's very familiar with political process, you know, even if you don't have an agenda, sometimes that agenda finds you. So hopefully by the end of this discussion today, particularly Q and A, there will be some ideas that we can take back to our respective communities and respective chambers and try and formulate something that's going to be beneficial to the investment community in Georgia as well as the 10 million residents of this great state. We all share the same goal on both sides of the aisle, that is promoting business, promoting a positive economic environment and certainly seeing if we can allow more of those startups, if you will, those entrepreneurs to attain access to capital in this great state. We're all committed to that. And in terms of my own personal initiatives, that's one thing that I would like to see and that is trying to find a way to create more of an environment with our technical schools and major universities and connect up budding entrepreneurs, if you will, with these institutions. If you're not in the loop, a lot of our citizens don't know those services are available. And I think that's one thing that we can do is provide that education to the community to know that there are some opportunities out there that we can hook these budding entrepreneurs up with. And in regards to trying to get some other initiatives started, I remain open and certainly I know that my colleague and my good friend over here, Justin, is open as well to anything that we can do to help stimulate Georgia's economy. That's one thing that we have to continue to do and we've talked about some of the issues from the infrastructure to technology to our educational institutions, but that's critically important, I know to me and I know it's critically important to the great citizens of this state. So I remain open and hopefully by the end of the day, someone out here will give me a good idea that I can take back and perhaps that we can share, if you will, on moving something forward in this great state.
Now those are all great, great comments. I think a number of things we need, one, let me back, let me start with the last question first. Building the relationships is very important. Other communities, other groups have strong relationships and frankly, when they're not there, it's, we're not intending to do something that may hurt you or your industry. We sometimes or oftentimes it may feel, do it because we frankly don't have the background and the information and we're moving quickly through a, basically about a three-month process. It's when we have the relationship where we can pick up the phone and call one of y'all right away and say, hey, we've got this bill coming up today, tell me what, you know, hopefully it's not today, but sometimes it is. Tell me, give me some background. What do we need to know, what do we, or it's coming up next week in a committee hearing, can y'all get some people to show up and testify? You're busy, I get it. But the thing is, is we unfortunately impact a lot of people when we positively help people out, but also make mistakes along the way. Couple of things I think are important too is, the industries that y'all invest in or own probably have a pretty high base salary threshold. I'd say, just off the top of my head, it's probably starting between the high 50s and low 70s for the entry level positions. That's really strong, that's really good. Challenges we hear are that among other things, you don't have an educated workforce. So we've gone a long way toward working, toward that, whether it's working with a business or helping them, encouraging them to work with college students to become interns along the way to grow up. But we recognize that we got to train and create an educated workforce that are qualified and competent to perform the work that are needed in these companies. For those companies to actually be able to stay in Georgia and want to start up in Georgia. Another thing is, we, I think it's important that I've advanced this joint entrepreneur and residence program because frankly, it's more about educating the legislature than it is about helping the industry. I mean, if I'm selfish about it, but it goes, it's actually a dual purpose, is to, for help us learn more, but also advance what's going on in the industry, whether it's through ATDC or whether it's over the University of Georgia. Kennesaw State has a budding program that we helped get started about maybe two years ago, we started a funding program, they're trying to do another, kind of like an ATDC, if that's the right terminology for what they're doing, what they're working on up there as well. Personally, I've been championing tax reform as finance chair in the Senate. I've led about eight, nine hearings around the state of Georgia. I had a couple of tax bills that passed out of the Senate this year, lowering our state income tax. We have tied for the highest in the South and that will start to hurt our capabilities to attract new investment as business leaders are saying, hey, I want to split my time between Georgia and Florida and other measures. We've had 19 states lower their income tax in the last two years or lower taxes. One of them was Massachusetts, they were at 5.1%, we're at 6%. Not picking on Massachusetts, we're picking on Georgia. But I've been advocating strongly to change, we haven't changed it in 79 years. Yeah, I said 79 years, we haven't changed it from that 6% level. So, on the personal side, I work on a lot of, on the fiscal policy and frankly, on healthcare, in a different world I won't get into, but I chair National Legislative Association on Healthcare and Health Policy. And so, we, we're in the process of learning during the off-season as we call it and we're here to learn and we'd like to champion wise measures that jointly, in a bipartisan way. We actually don't fight. We, they're about 10% of the things we, about 10% of the things we disagree on and you read about in the newspaper. And about 90% we don't, we all agree on. Seriously, maybe 85%, but seriously, you read about this stuff in the newspaper that we disagree on and then we firmly disagree and then, but then we go to dinner. I mean, seriously. So, we get along well and Emmanuel and I are outliers in the legislature because probably 75, 80% of the Senate has turned over since we've been elected and we don't have term limits. We term limit ourselves. We've had about 75 or 80% in the Senate leave. There's only three of us that started when we started, I think, out of 21 new senators that year, three. The House is probably about the same turnover. So, we, that's another reason to build those strong relationships because we may not be there that long, but the longer we are there, the better chance we can have to learn more about what's important to y'all and we're interested, so.
Well, thank you so much. Could you give them another round of applause for taking time out? And I wanted to do something before questions, just to remind you that if you are interested in the second public hearing that the ad hoc committee made up of House of Representative members are having, it'll be May the 26th at 12 o'clock and I'll be doing a press release for everybody who's on my contact list, but if you want to be added to that list and you're in Georgia and you want to come and testify before the committee, we have some great things that are happening and I plan to put together a focus group in June or July to come up with a proposal of things that we can do to strengthen our investment policy in Georgia, probably in June or July. So if you want to be on that list, then let me know. But if you wanted to open it up for questions, I think we had one question back there.
Yes. According to U.S. News and World Report, Georgia State University is number five in innovation. Georgia Tech is 13. You can look that up. I'm just wondering, if you're looking at reallocating resources to different universities, you were mentioning Senator about health information technology. The Center for Health Information Technology at Georgia State is superb. They got so many programs. Unfortunately, their public relation is not as robust, let me say, as some other universities are. I'm just wondering if you're looking at allocating resources to other universities that have many, many good programs, like I was just saying, Georgia State University, number five in innovation and innovation.
That's impressive.
Go right ahead.
We're here to learn.
The short answer is no, we're not. But if you really want to jump into a ward and you start looking at the dollars that are carved up, if you will, for academic institutions, certainly one thing that I would like to do and I understand the importance of Georgia State to, certainly the state of Georgia and there are a lot of other innovations that they have down in Georgia State that I think is important. But we've always had flagships and of course, Georgia Tech and UGA has been two of our flagships in this state and they have those long-established relationships. And I think to a large extent, Georgia State compared to those other institutions is relatively new and.
Well, that's what I'm suggesting is perhaps you need to look at reallocating some resources.
Well, that, I don't serve on that committee in the Senate. I think you would need to probably start down at the governor's office with his budget and what the governor thinks and the allocation of those resources. What we need to do is raise additional resources so that we can give additional funding to all of our academic institution and that's certainly one thing that I'm in favor of. Senator, you know of any redistribution or reallocation of resources?
A lot of this, and I believe this is correct, and I haven't served on the higher ed appropriation subcommittee ever, but I believe this is.
Neither have I, by the way.
I believe this is correct. I know this part's correct, is the legislature has for perhaps two generations been taken out of the details of higher ed with border regions. I mean, basically we write them a check and they have the opportunity to do what they want. I don't think that's right, but it got us out of the politics probably 50, 60, or whenever it was done and it's always been done that way. But if you always do what you always done, you always get what you've always gotten. And that's probably not a good thing. So, it's the education, number one, what you're doing and then broadening that and talking to the Georgia State leadership and those at the Capitol and frankly, alumni from Georgia State that serve in the legislature collectively. And I think you can go a long way towards, I think you'll find a favorable reception and go a long way towards, working towards that. Actually, if I may selfishly, stay in touch because as we start announcing the entrepreneur and residence programs, we always will bring in the Georgia Tech and all, but we'd like to, you know, maybe bring in Georgia State if there's something that we can hear from them about and that'd be very, very helpful. Thank you.
Well, thank you everyone. We're going to go ahead and wrap it up for time's sake, but if you have any questions, please ask them for their information and again, start to build those relationships like Senator Hill suggested, but I'll take it over to, give it to Del Ray to give further instructions.